Good evening and welcome to this August the 2nd meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. I hope you have voted by now. This is the last minute reminder that the polls close at 7:00. I can't imagine anybody watching and is interested in City Commission hasn't voted already. So if you would join me for...
Roll call.
Roll call. We're going to do that. You're right. Mayor Morse.
Present.
Commissioner Hattasol.
Present.
Commissioner Reddy.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
We have five commissioners. We have a core mayor. At this point, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you stand and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe there's any recognition. And there are no proclamations this evening. But this is the first meeting of the month. So this, it is at this meeting that we have open public comments or the opportunity for open public comments. So those wanting to make comments not related to an item on the agenda can do so at this time. Members, no one signed up ahead of time. We would ask that you state your name and address. Does anyone wish to come forward? You would have five minutes. Saying no rush to the podium. I would close the public comment period. So, and we'll move on to Commissioner comments.
Yes, thank you. I want to mention that Everybody Counts will be doing, will be at the, I guess at the Douglas Center area, area on Yuma. All the social service agencies will be there. Lots of interesting and inform, very, lots of information along with services that they provide. So if you know any families, students, or anybody else that is involved or you think might benefit from these services, please bring them along. Or if you want to take something back to them also, that's also provided. I've always learned a lot from all of the organizations that we have in our community. Very useful, very productive, and I highly recommend any one of you making a trip down there and collecting as much information as you need for what is provided in our community. Thank you.
I support Usha's endorsement of the Everybody Counts this coming Saturday at the Douglas Center Park. And I plan to attend and look forward to seeing people there. I even considered having a booth in case people wanted to come and talk to the mayor. But that might be a little strange. Anyway, but it'd be something I could do by just going, walking around also. So invite people to come. It's going to be a hot day, I think. Anyway, I don't think it's going to be cool. So, all right. Next would be the Consent Agenda. The items on the Consent Agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be removed from, for separate discussion and consideration immediately following the Consent Agenda or at a different point on the agenda if desired by the City Commission. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the Consent Agenda items?
I just wanted to mention, you know, Item E. If somebody's reading that, it may look like we're levying a new tax. And of course, no, this is the tax that was approved by the voters, the Extended Economic Development Tax that goes into Pot County. So it's not new, it's just a formality.
Thank you. Okay. And the next item is Open Public Comment for Items on the Consent Agenda. If you've had the opportunity to review them and you have any comments, now would be the time. Saying no one. I'll close the opportunity for public comment on the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion from the Commission?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City Clerk, would you, I, I can, well, you know who did, but who, please call the roll. Commissioner Hattasol.
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Mayor Morse.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And the next item is a public hearing to consider rezoning the property at 625 South 10th Street from IL Light Industrial to ICS Industrial slash Commercial Services District. And Stephanie Peterson, the Director of Community Development, will lead us.
Yes, thank you for that introduction. We had a call-in audible about 20 minutes ago upstairs. So I will be presenting this item. Barry wasn't able to, to be here. First off, you had already stated this is the rezoning of 625 South 10th Street, probably more commonly known as Howie's Recycling Center. And this is the public hearing for the rezoning from IL Light Industrial to ICS Industrial Commercial Service District. The general vicinity of the property is along Fort Riley Boulevard and the southeast part of the community. Here's a vicinity map showing the parcel that is being rezoned. One thing to note is that part of the reason that the property is asking to be rezoned is when the MDC was adopted, it took the original zoning that was I-3, which was Light Industrial, that had allowed Recycling Center as a permitted use. And then it converted over after the MTC, MDC's adoption to Light Industrial, which no longer allowed for a recycling operation. They have been operating with a conditional use for a while now. And they just wanted to go through the process where they're no longer a non-conforming use. Excuse me. The, the zoning change to ICS that is consistent with our, the Future Land Use Plan, that's in the Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. Here's the, the property is with the, with the star. And then the zoning map and the, the properties that are within the same vicinity. The ICS zoning is appropriate for the surrounding properties. It would be consistent with the additional, or the other uses within this area. And the, both the Manhattan Urban Area unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning request. We had no public comments. There was no comment from the Board other than clarifying questions. And then at the July meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals, that Board also unanimously approved the conditional use permit to allow for the recycling center to operate in the ICS. Just as a side note, kind of for your information, we do have certain zoning districts, one of them being General Industrial, which have, would have allowed the recycling center permitted outright. However, there's some signage that the owner is looking at in the future, and that wouldn't have been permitted with that zoning district. So their preference was the ICS, knowing that they had to get that conditional use permit in order to continue to operate as a recycling center. So staff's recommendation, as well as the recommendation from the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board, is to approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning 625 South 10th Street from IL Light Industrial to ICS Industrial Commercial Services District based on the findings in the staff report. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Commissioners? Not at this point, it looks like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the background information was excellent and thus no questions. Thank you, Stephanie. I'd like to, there's a section here about announcing ex parte communication. So prior to proceeding further, each member of the governing body who has engaged in any ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that the communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in the communication, if you are able to fairly objectively and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record at this meeting.
I was not contacted because nobody cares.
I didn't, I spoke with our city manager. I had a few questions, but it wasn't in favor or opposed to the recommendation.
So you didn't have any contact?
No contact.
I too, in a meeting, talked to the city manager, but I had no outside contacts outside the city. So, all right. If we, at this point, I would open the public hearing on this proposal. So if anyone in the audience wishes to come forward, has an opinion, or would like to express a concern, now is the time. If you do, I have another paragraph to read. Anyway. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And, um, I don't see, is there a representative of the applicant here? I don't see anyone. I don't see anyone I don't know. So there must not be. Okay. So I don't need to ask that person to come forward. Does City Staff, you have any final comments? Yeah? And Commissioners, do you have any other questions? One last time. Okay. Is there a motion from the Commission?
Yeah, I make the motion. We approve first reading of an ordinance rezoning 625 South 10th Street from IL Light Industrial to ICS Industrial Commercial Services based on findings in staff report.
I'll second it.
Okay. City Clerk, Brenda Wolf, we have a, the roll. Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay. And now we shift to, thank you very much, everyone. We shift to the general agenda, and we will consider the nomination of Yuma Street Historic District. That's all it says. Ben Schmeele, hello.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Ben Schmeele, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department. Tonight, we'll be looking at a proposal to create a historic district in the 900 block of Yuma Street. A little bit more detail on that in a minute. But first, I wanted to give you kind of a timeline of, of this project. It really started in 2012. The city was awarded a grant from the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO, to study the area generally south of Points. It was called the African-American Cultural Resources Survey, geared toward studying the significance of the area as it relates to the development of, of the Black community in Manhattan over time. A couple of things came out of that, that survey. Two buildings were listed on the National Register of Historic Places. But that was really all that happened. Typically, out of these surveys, we see historic districts form, but just those two individuals were, were listed at that time. It stayed dormant for the better part of six years. In 2018, City, CD Staff met with Parks and Rec Staff to kind of look at financing options for some improvements that they were looking at in the Douglas Center and Douglas Center Annex. We knew at the time that those two buildings were potentially eligible for the National Register, and thus, if they were listed, could qualify for tax credits. So Staff was interested in pursuing or looking into that. So we went to the Frederick Douglass Recreation Center Advisory Board at the end of 2018 to get their input. At that time, the Board actually recommended looking at a broader area to potentially, potentially create a historic district in that thematic nomination. So in 2019, we, we've heard from the state who said a district of the sort would be eligible for the National Register. At the time, the Douglas Activity Center was being proposed and was about to be underway. Staff was kind of wary of, of doing both a historic district and seeing that project come to fruition at the same time. So we, we put that on the back burner. Meanwhile, COVID happened, made engagement and meetings really difficult. So by 2021, that, that Activity, Activity Center was complete. And so this, this year, we re-engaged that Board to see if it was something that they were still interested in, and they unanimously supported that. So since then, we've gone to various other Boards, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the Historic Resources Board, who have unanimously supported the project. As well, we began to engage property owners that would be included in a district and got support from them. So the actual district would be located south of Points. Like I said, on the 900 block of Yuma Street, including 831 Yuma Street, which is the Pilgrim Baptist Church, already listed on the National Register. That was one of those buildings that were listed after that survey in 2012. So it made sense to include it in a proposed district. So generally, it includes the Douglas Center, Douglas Center Annex, Mount Zion Church, and the Cobbleu Mason's Lodge. Here's a list of, of those properties, the year they were constructed, and their status as a contributing or non-contributing property within the district. So there are three registration levels when it comes to historic preservation. There's this, the local register, state register, and the national register. This would be a, we would be pursuing state and national listing in, in this case. So historic designation, in order to designate a historic district, there are four criteria for evaluation. In 2019, I mentioned SHIPO determined that it would be, this district would be eligible under Criterion A for its relationship to Black ethnic heritage in the Black community in, in Manhattan. So it has to be one of those criteria and have integrity, meaning that the buildings can't be substantially modified or damaged beyond their original appearance. So just a little bit of background on the history of, of this area. South of Points, along Yuma Street, Fort Riley Boulevard, was historically the, the primary neighborhood of the Black community throughout Manhattan's history. The outline here would be the proposed district, right in the center of, of that neighborhood, really where all of the, really the hub for all social, political, cultural activity for that community throughout the early history of Manhattan. Just to give you an idea of, of what these buildings have looked like over time, this is the Douglas Center Annex, originally the Douglas School. It was Manhattan's first Black elementary school. Hasn't changed a whole lot over time. This is Shepherd's Chapel, which today is the Cobbleu Mason's Lodge, converted to the Mason's Lodge in the late 60s, early 70s. Pilgrim Baptist, originally Second Baptist Church, already on the National Register. This is the Douglas Center, originally constructed as a USO for Black soldiers in World War II. So why preserve these buildings? History, historic buildings undoubtedly connect us to our past. They're relics of our culture, heritage, traditions, and history that we can actually interact with, touch and see in a meaningful way. They make our community a unique place to live and make it a place that we can take pride in. And I throw this image up here just to show you what preservation does in our community. This is the Union Pacific Depot in 1980. Shortly after it shut down, fell out of use. And through a very wide sweeping community effort, including listing on the State Register, community involvement, several individuals donating money, grants, tax credits, we were able to turn it into what you see today. That would not have happened if, if it wasn't, didn't have access to the resources by being listed on the State Register. Second reason, I talked about it with that project, there are financial incentives to pursue historic designation. At the state level, there's a 25% tax credit offered for qualifying rehab expenditures. At the federal level, there's a 20%. The, the city would not qualify for that federal credit. But at the state level, we would because those tax credits are transferable. So that, there's a lot that can, can fall into the category of qualified expenditures. Here's a list. Anything that wouldn't fall out of the building if you turned it upside down and shook it would qualify for, for tax credits. Furthermore, there are grants that are available through the state and other non-government organizations on occasion. To give you an idea of how those have been utilized in the city, in 2021, just this last year, we had a three-quarters of a million in improvements in historic districts and properties, and $1.3 million in tax credits issued throughout the city. Since 2002, when we started measuring this, we've had 5.1 million issued to property owners in the city with another 1 million in the pike. Here's a little graph of what that, that looks like. So we've had a pretty recent boom in improvements to historic properties and utilization of tax credits. So the other side of the coin with those financial incentives is an additional review for projects affecting historic property. Because the city of Manhattan is a certified local government, we can do those reviews here at the city as opposed to in Topeka. Anytime a building permit, demo permit, sign permit, or zoning action, public improvement happens on one of the properties, it has to be reviewed either by City Staff, if it's small enough, or the HRB, if it's what's considered a major project. The HRB utilizes the Secretary of Interior Standards in order to judge those, those projects compatibility. To give you an idea of how that has played out in recent history, so since 2019, 61 projects have been reviewed by the city through that process. 46 were reviewed and approved by Staff, 15 reviewed and approved by the HRB. Of those that went to the HRB, four were denied. Two were modified, resubmitted, and approved. Two were appealed to the City Commission. And as you are familiar, one was overturned and the other upheld. Prior to 2019, there were 106 projects reviewed by the city, none of which were denied by Staff or the HRB. So since 2014, which is around when I started with the city, between Staff and HRB, we have an approval rating of 97.6%. If you count going to City Commission for appeals, that number increases to 99.4%. So tonight, we're soliciting support, consent from the City Commission to be included in this historic district. The state requires that 50% of property owners within the district consent, or rather, not oppose the nomination. We have four total owners in this, in this district, one of which is the City of Manhattan. So currently, since City Staff has, has gotten support, letters of, of support from those other three property owners, so currently, we're at 75% consent. The way it works with historic districts, it's just the number of property owners. It doesn't matter how much property you own or how many properties. So it's looking at like the state or the Senate in the House at the federal legislature. It works more like the Senate than it does the House. So we're at 75% right now, and Staff is looking for consent from the city.
Then, before you leave that map, just...
Yes.
The question mark there on that parking lot, explain that, please.
So these three properties with the question marks over them are, are city-owned.
Are city.
Yeah.
So the parking lot there by the, between the Douglas Center and the church is owned by the city?
Yeah. I'm not sure why, but it, it is a separate property.
I knew we had some issues being able to, for the public to park in the parking lot because the church, do we lease it or something to the church? How, there were issues in, in the past. I don't, I don't remember the, the history.
My recollection is that we, we've, it's always been a parking lot. It's not always been a paved parking lot.
Yeah, okay.
But when we did pave it, it created more use. And so we've had, don't know, I don't recall, and Dave may recall, but the, I don't think we ever had a lease arrangement. We've just had an agreement that allows them to use it when we don't need to use it.
Okay.
Those are fairly compatible times.
And it works very well.
And it works.
Okay, good. I don't know what I'm remembering, so, okay.
So this is the timeline moving forward. The nomination deadline for a final, final application is due August 7th. September 14th is a National Park Service Grant Application Deadline. I only bring that up because the reason the city or City Staff has moved the, kind of the timeline on this project to the forefront is because of that Grant Application Deadline. There's a private individual who, at this time, wishes to remain anonymous, who is looking to establish a Black History Museum and Cultural Center within the district. The, that grant would, that project would qualify for funds from that grant. But the, its qualifications depend on it being eligible for the National Register. So this was a project that City Staff was exploring the, the pursuit of, and that private endeavor just sort of lined up well with, with our timeline. So if, if the nomination were to move forward and submitted on August 7th, it would go to the November 5th State Sites Review Board Meeting for state listing. This is the request that is mentioned in your packets, consent from the city as a property owner, and direction for city administration to submit the nomination. I'll stand for questions.
Questions?
Yeah. Thanks, Ben, for the presentation. So out of the, my understanding is it doesn't matter the percentage of property that's being owned by any of the four property owners. You just need the majority of the property owners to approve it. So you have 75% already. So even if this commission voted, let's say, not to move forward with it, you still have the 75%. So is there any barriers to that for it to still move forward, or?
Staff would not submit that nomination if it were not the direction that the City Commission wanted to go.
So one of the other property owners have to take it up, I suppose?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay. And for, I believe, the Federal Douglas, Frederick Douglass Advisory Board approved, and the Manhattan Parks and Rec Advisory Board, as well as the Historic Resources Advisory Board, all approved it, right?
Yeah, that, all three Boards were unanimous in their support.
In support of this. And is there any other area in our community, you may have mentioned it, I'm not sure, any other area in our community that's been designated or has historic perspective as far as the African-American community and their importance or impact on our community? Has any other area in Manhattan been designated as such?
Area, no. Individual resources, I, I don't think so either. This would be the first historic designation of the, recognizing specifically Black history within the city.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, so there's been a change over the years now with the whole environs thing. If this is designated a historic district, if you're outside of the boundary, you can still, you don't have to run any kind of, if someone wants to put some privacy fence or build a shed in their backyard, they don't have to go through the historic?
Yeah.
Or do they? How's that work now?
Um, yeah. Environs, Environs law was struck down in 2013. So any property, property outside of a historic district is not affected by the existence of that district.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure.
Kind of the question I had. A good presentation, appears that everything's on, in order, everything makes sense. Everybody's approved. Now, we're the last one of the properties to, to approve this. We've got someone wanting to do a project. Sounds like a really good project. I always get worried with these historical things that something comes back later that, you know, that we can't do a development, or we, some private property owner is forced to do something. But I, I really can't find anything in, in this one that I really worry about. But I, I really can't find anything in, in this one that I really worry about in any way. Is there anything I should be worried about?
Good question. It, this has been very simple compared to other historic districts, establishing them in the past. That simply comes from unanimous support from the property owners within them. We have larger historic districts that, you know, we're dealing with 40, 50, 60 property owners, and many of them are not okay with being in a historic district. So this is, this is very rare that we have this much support from those within the district that have a vested interest. To your point about, you know, potential pitfalls in the future, I, I did mention the restrictions or the, rather, the, the additional review process that projects affecting these structures in the district have to go through. This commission is well familiar with the appeal process that is in place should there be an instance where it is maybe not necessary to adhere to the standards that the Secretary of the Interior has laid out. The city has quite a bit of control in this district, being, you know, owning two of the resources within the district. If you're familiar with those appeal processes, you know, the, the city of Manhattan does have a lot of leverage when it comes to, you know, deciding if a project should move forward or not.
So I'll take that as a, not really.
Staff has no major concerns. The, the Douglas Activity Center was completed.
Ben, you just might walk through a situation where if there's a park improvement proposed within the confines of the district, just the process that would go, say, maybe a new picnic shelter or something like that?
Yeah, absolutely. So in that example, a new picnic shelter, that would require a review. We would, staff would consider that a minor review, and then city administration or city staff could approve of that. I, I wouldn't see any issue with the construction of a shelter under any circumstances unless it were really large. Another example, so the Douglas Activity Center, were that, were this district in place and were proposed to be located in the actual park here? Staff may have some reservations about that, and I imagine the HRB would as well. You know, there may be a higher standard for materials or what the site layout of that would look like. But being, being that there's an appeal process, if that were to, to go to the city commission, you know, you could cite, you know, a parks plan that said that, no, this is the, the location, and it's, you know, for, for the good of the community to have this here. I don't know, does that help?
Ben, the only thing I can think of that might be a variable is the breadbasket. It might not, these buildings have stood the test of time for the most part, but the breadbasket is not probably going to be preserved forever. So if it were to move, and I, I can see as the community grows, the need for the breadbasket could be expanded, the size, or it could move, just, this is a what-if question. It's in the district.
It is not.
It is not.
It's just south of the alley here.
It's outside, okay. Now, so the question then is, if something is within so many feet of the district, is it affected?
No.
No, okay.
It is not.
All right.
We, we did go through some review with the parking lot here that was, that will be renewed. We, we did kind of have an eye toward preservation in that, but, you know, just replacing the parking lot, there's really nothing to have an objection to. This building was demolished recently. It's just a tin, basically a glorified tin shed. You know, the demolition of that wouldn't have been an issue, you know, not being a building that really contributes to the historic nature.
Okay. All right, thank you. Seeing no more questions, I'd like to open the meeting to public comment. Members of the public are welcome to come forward, state your name and your address and sign the paper, and who you might be representing. Each speaker has five minutes and can only speak once. We'll take your comments under advisement if you'd like to come forward, please. Now's the time. You're on the hot seat, David Baker. No, welcome.
Commissioners, my name is Dave Baker. I reside at 2626 Sumac here in Manhattan. I still own my property that I was born and raised in at 1231 Yuma, and I'm here to solicit your support for this Yuma Street Historical District. I think it's, it's very important. Just about three quick points here. I left Manhattan in 1984, my coaching career, moved to Oklahoma. And when I left, Fort Riley, Fort, Yuma Street was Fort Riley Boulevard today. It was the main corridor on the south side of Manhattan, Kansas. And so you couldn't get from east or the west side without going down Yuma Street. And so, Yuma Street is a very important street in this community. It was the main street of the black community as we once knew. Yesterday's black community is gone. We do not, we have more African-American people living in this community today than we did back in the day, but they all do not live in one area as we did when I grew up here. There's five buildings left, only five buildings left on, on the south side of town on Yuma Street. Bethel Church, which is on Fourth and Yuma, Pilgrim Baptist Church, right there at Nathan, Yuma, Douglas Center, Douglas School, which was in the annex, and Shepherd Chapel Church. Those buildings are very, very important to this community. There's an old saying about history, once it goes away, it does not come back. So I think it's very important that we preserve those facilities and make this a historical district. I'm working with some people right now trying to refurbish the Shepherd Chapel Church, and if we get that done, that will make that a wonderful historical district. And speaking with Ben today, I think there's only like four historical districts in Manhattan, Kansas. That's not very many for a community this size. So getting another one on the south side of Manhattan on Yuma Street, I think would certainly be an asset to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Does anyone else wish to come forward?
Is there a pen? Well, I think you know me. Thanks, Jason.
I'm Linda Glasgow, 2236 Snowbird Drive here in Manhattan. Tonight, I'm representing the 65 families who are members of the Manhattan Riley County Preservation Alliance. We enthusiastically support this proposed district. We think it'll be a wonderful asset to our community, and I think it will be very interesting when a book that is proposed about the Yuma Street area will be published. I think we will all benefit from learning more about this very vibrant area that is very different today than it was way back when. And I think it will be pretty fascinating to learn the impact that this little district has had on the wider world. So again, we certainly do appreciate your efforts here tonight and thank the group that's brought this forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Jawtowski. I live at 100 South Delaware Avenue. I am very much in favor of this historic district. I think it will help all of us better understand and appreciate the history of this area and its importance to our community. Another thing I wanted to mention that, that came up during the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting was it was mentioned that the city frequently gets federal funds to help with the Douglas Center, and when federal funds are used, there's a review process called the Section 106 review, and there are a lot of things under that umbrella that get reviewed that aren't necessarily applicable, like environmental impact, burial grounds, things like that. But also under that is historic preservation. So my point is that the city, to some extent, is already, when, every time they use federal funds, already been doing sort of a review process in terms of historic preservation to make sure that whatever work is happening is not going to cause a problem in terms of historic preservation. So this, in a way, won't be too much of an extra burden than what the city's already been experiencing when they use federal funds on either the center or the annex. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Evening, Commissioners. My name is Vincent Tracy. I live at 304 Knoxberry Drive, and I'm a member of the Masonic Fraternity here in Manhattan. And my brothers and the Prince Hall affiliate are very much in favor of having this district approved so that funding can be made available to make the cove blue structure back into the thing that was the glory in the first church, black church in our community. So I'm asking you all to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Where is your Masonic fraternity you mentioned?
321 Houston.
Okay. I just didn't know, thanks. Does anyone else wish to speak to this issue? If you would come forward, please. One more recruit.
My name's Carl Rivers. I live at 2119 Prairie Field here in Manhattan, and my family goes back in time, one of the founders, as far as the, like Dave Baker, we're, we're related. And I just want to say I am in favor of this historical society. Got a lot of memories. I went to Shepherd's Church. The parking lot there next to the Mount Zion Church was where my aunt and uncle lived for several years. The house was owned by my great uncle, and so it's, it's my home area. And I would like to see it preserved.
Thank you, Carl. Does anyone else wish to come forward? Okay. Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any more further questions?
I just want to ask, the Rec Center is not at all in the district because of the way that line goes by the breadbasket?
It is not.
Okay. I don't have any problems, just like Mark answered the question I was concerned about to be sure that we don't have any problems with the development outside of it, but the district itself looks like a winner.
Yeah, I really appreciate the city bringing this to us, and I think it's pretty significant to recognize and preserve our African-American community within Manhattan for the future, for our children, as well as future families, and to recognize it and put more funding into it to make sure that it is, people can visit and make sure that we are doing our due diligence to preserve it. So thank you for everybody here that commented on it and also is taking the initiative to move it forward, as well as the anonymous applicant that would like to do more as far as a museum in that area as well.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of consent for the proposed Yuma Street Historic District and direct city staff to finalize and submit a nomination for the district to the state and national register of historic places.
Second.
Okay. Under comments, I, now that we have a motion on the floor, I would just like to say that I support this historic district. I think other communities have highlighted their African-American, black heritage. I know that Junction City is initiating even a trail, and, and I'm hopeful that it will go further than, you know, come this way. But Topeka, certainly with the Brown v. Board of Education site, there are, you know, if we don't, and, and David Baker, you make a wonderful point, that history will be lost if we don't do something to preserve it. So this is the, this is our opportunity to, to make that difference. And that's kind of, sorry it's taken this long, it's 2022. Should have happened a while back, probably. So, but at any rate, I plan to support it. Any other comments from Commissioners? Okay. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. That concludes the actual business portion of our meeting, but there is an executive session planned for this evening, so we are estimating 30 minutes, and I need a motion. So who's prepared to offer that?
The mayor, I move that we go recess into executive, executive session to discuss specific employees' performances pursuant to the exception set forth in KSA 75-4319B1 allowing for discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel, and to resume the open meeting at 7:15? Yeah, at 7:15? 7:20 in the city commission room.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All right. City Clerk, would you call the, the roll?
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
What time is it?
We'll return to this room for the official adjournment. I don't believe that there's any action anticipated beyond, at the end of the meeting. Just, not that I'm aware of, anyway.
I move that we extend our executive session for another 30 minutes until 7:50.
I'll second.
We have a motion. I think you need to read the whole, read the whole thing again.
I move that we recess into executive session to discuss specific employees' performances pursuant to the exception linked set forth in the KSA that allow, allowing for discussion of personnel matters of not elected personnel and to resume the open meeting at 7:50 PM in the City Commission room.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
A second.
We have a motion. I think you need to read the whole, read the whole thing again.
I move that we recess into executive session to discuss specific employees' performances pursuant to the exception linked set forth in the KSA that allow, allowing for discussion of personnel matters of not elected personnel and to resume the open meeting at seven fifty PM in the City Commission room.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, the, the executive session has ended, and I believe we're ready for adjournment. Is there a motion, please?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?